Jeanne, if you'd like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance because I'm told I say it too fast. For those of us who like to join, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Always pleased to say the pledge is in place.
Next up is approval of minutes for September 11, 2013. I was not present, so we ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll let you do your motion stuff and then I have several corrections. I make a motion to approve the minutes for September 11, 2013. Is this second?
Any discussion?
Yes, yes. Under opening day review, related to the gas leak, the names of the streets that were involved need to be changed. Sohier is S.O.H.I.E.R. Street and it would be Ripley Road. I'll skip that one.
Jeanne, I have one prior to that.
Oh, okay.
Just under superintendent's report, the second paragraph.
Uh huh.
This is Cataldo here, a statement about a partition. A partition?
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, you're right. I was watching, but I didn't. Okay, great. All right, and then at the first paragraph on the top of the second page, and this will forever be known as the cricket meeting because the cricket was chirping through the whole meeting. Okay. Technology will be updated by the end of this year, new art teacher, full-time position and doing a fine job. And then it says, "Whole school changed schedule to full teaching." It should've said wholesale, "Schedule change to enable a full teaching literacy block." And I can send this to you, Jennifer, if you don't get it.
Which paragraph is that?
It's the first one at the top of the, um, top of the second page.
All right, we have it, thanks.
Okay, and then, um, under teachers induction meeting, at the bottom of that section, I think that we should include that there was information shared with the school committee and parents on how the large numbers are being addressed on the playground and in the, at the elementary school. That was discussed at the, in the meeting. I watched the recording. And on the next page, first paragraph, "Parents asked the reason for departure." And it said, no, back up. "The most movement for this year took place with the rising eighth grade class. One school, eight students left to attend." That, I believe, should read, "Eight students left to attend one school." And then the next sentence, "Parents asked the reason for departure." It should say, "Parents were asked the reason for departure." The rest of the sentence says, "They all said it's family tradition." And that should be, "Many said it's family tradition." Okay, at the bottom, under the teacher evaluation tool, we took a roll call vote and all voted aye on that. The motion was made by Dr. Lee to approve the new teacher evaluation tool for Cohasset School System for Teachers, seconded by Mrs. McGoldrick. And the roll call vote was taken and all, it was four zero. As Dr. Schubert stated, he wasn't at the meeting. So the other four of us voted aye. And then again, at the end, when we adjourned, the roll call vote should be noted. It does say vote five zero to adjourn, but it should say roll call vote to adjourn.
Should it should be four zero?
Yeah, it should be four zero, not five zero.
Maybe I'll change gears.
Okay. And I have some other comments about items that I requested that be made, so I'll send you any more.
Okay.
Um, so I make a motion to, uh, to accept the meetings of September 11, 2013 as amended.
And I'll second it.
Do you want to draw the person or do you just want to amend it?
Either way.
Okay, why don't you just make amendment over here, maybe you did. Amendment to?
I make amendment to, um, I make a
Motion.
A motion to amend the meetings of September 11, 2013.
Let me second.
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
What?
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes three zero. If I was not there, it won't go down. And the original motion to accept the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
To accept.
Excuse us, the original motion was to accept the minutes.
To accept the minutes, but the minutes were wrong. And that's, I don't understand why we do this.
There was an amendment which was amending the minutes.
Right.
And then we go to the original one, we accept it, and if they were amended.
That, that's fine. I make a motion to accept the minutes September 11 as amended.
Okay.
Second?
No, it's, all you got is one on.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm not voting, I wasn't there. Thanks. Okay, next is the certification of contract. I'm pleased to announce the contract for employment move. Barbara J. Cataldo of the school committee has been assigned. The copy you have is what we have except for two important distinctions. One is Barbara Cataldo's signature and that one's mine. So I'd ask for a motion to accept the contract and open session.
I make a motion to accept the contract for Barbara J. Cataldo and open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
And passes three to one.
Can we have a conversation on this? I had asked you at the last meeting if we were ready to move on the contract and you said that it had gone back for further discussion. Is this exactly the document that we received at the last, at our last executive session?
Except for, as I mentioned, except for the two, two signatures, yes.
So the language will be exact with what we already have?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next is superintendent's report, the MASSS Certification of Academic Excellence.
So every year, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents give an award for a certificate of academic excellence. It's provided to the student who has the position of number one in senior classes and moving towards graduation. And it is, this year, what it says is for the individuals having duly qualified under the standards of prescribed, standards prescribed by the Mass Association of School Superintendents is hereby awarded a certificate of academic excellence in witness of today. And so I'm going to ask that Dr. Schubert come around because this year, the award is being given to, and this time I was practicing after my last time, I apologize. But this time it's being given to Alexandra Dillagenitas. Did I get it right this time?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is an honor. So I thank you for working so hard. Has it been easy or hard?
Uh, I mean, it's in the middle, I guess.
I'd like him to invite me to a student for me. Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
Where are you applying to school?
Uh, don't know yet.
Uh huh, well, good luck. And as you apply to school, use the alumni network for the schools from Cohasset High School. It can be very helpful to you. Especially some of the very competitive ones.
And probably a round of applause for the parents.
Absolutely. The, the next thing on my report this week is the National Merit Scholarship Awards. We had some commendation awards that I asked Mrs. Conley to come and present. We did ask all of the five adult young people to come and join us tonight, but I think between the fact it's the end of the semester, we have many playoff games, a lot of activities in the community. We're approaching a holiday weekend. It was hard to get everybody to come. And so I know that Mrs. Conley has one award to give and will announce the other four names.
Certainly. The National Merit Scholarship Program sent us five students this year to receive a letter of commendation. And I'll go out of alphabetical order to acknowledge Alexandra Dillagenitas. Thank you, welcome, well done. And the other students being recognized by the National Merit Board are Jack Stanginelli, Derek Benson, Joe Buckley, and Sam Curatola.
And Mrs. Conley, just to, for those who are in the audience listening, help, could you just tell us a little bit about how they accomplished such a task?
Sure. The National Merit Scholarship Program assesses students' performance in the PSAT, which is for most students taken in the junior year, some students take it in the sophomore year. And students are recognized as being toward the top of their class, but it's a nationwide assessment. And some students receive actual scholarships out of it. But a letter of commendation is really quite a high honor and it means that the students really achieved quite a performance on the PSAT what they awarded in the senior year so that they can add it to their list of accolades, I suppose, for applying to schools. So it's really quite a nice achievement for them.
Tremendous achievement, thank you.
Um, and it's usually the top two percent of the whole country.
Uh huh.
I believe, right? Yeah.
And for such a small class to have five members is a real accomplishment.
Absolutely.
Go Cohasset! Go the Red Sox!
Okay. The third thing on your list is the John and Abigail Adams Scholarships. And so what I did is I presented you with a list of the names, I believe. There should be in your pack, do you have them over there?
I don't think you know.
Did I, that's the one I missed. You know, when you have, you come in with so many packets and you think, did I get it all? That's the one I missed, I apologize.
Okay.
It's just this two.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. No, thank you. So I, we sent letters out to the students to let them know. And tonight, we're just going to read their names. We knew there were so many students with so many commitments. We, we asked them to just note that their names will be mentioned here. But this year, we have Dakota Achen, Sophie Arnold, Derek Benson, John Buckley, William Bootenchain, Timothy Cavanaro, Daniel Cronin, Brian Crowe, Alexandros Dushdus, thank you. And your sister Sophia, correct? Okay?
Yep.
And we have Kyler Desire, Terrence Doonan, Catherine Dunn, Willem Golden, Christopher Hagerty, Clark Indek, Gabriel Lemong, Margaret Littlejohn, Jessica Lyons, Matthew McCormick, Stephen Mar, excuse me, Catherine McCabe, John McElven, John O'Brien, Bridget O'Grady, Hannah Piasecki, Liam Plasick, Elijah Ponce, Alexandra Russell, Joseph Sestido, Jack Stanginelli, Stanginelli, Reed Westcott, and Colin Whalen, Whalen. So I think quite an honor to have so many on this list. And of course, with that comes the opportunity to attend a state school with a scholarship for the tuition portion of the state school. If students choose to access that, that gift, so. But we wanted to recognize them because that too is a feat as well. So we have an awful lot of honors coming our way here in Cohasset and want to make sure that the students know they're being recognized. The fourth thing on my report is, Mrs. Jordan is here tonight. She had put in a letter because she's interested in taking a group of students back to Guatemala and she has a presentation. In your packet, what we did is we gave you tonight maroon envelopes. The information that Mrs. Jordan wanted to share with you had not arrived by the time your packets went out. And so we asked her to bring it to the meeting. You should have it with you while she's speaking. This will give you a chance to ask questions and what's anticipated with this trip.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This will be my fourth trip, taking students abroad from Cohasset Middle High School. This will be my third trip to Guatemala with students. I have previously also done a trip to Spain a couple of years back with a few students for sixteen days, southern Spain in July. It was about a hundred and fifteen degrees. So I like Guatemala where it's about seventy-five to eighty degrees and sunny. The reason why I'm deciding to make this part of the curriculum, hopefully every other year, program is the fact that this really is the pinnacle of being a language teacher, seeing the students interact in a foreign country with native speakers and to be able to use a target language and be understood, which for me was thrilling. Way back when I was fifteen, I spent six months as an exchange student in Colombia. And that spurred my desire to become a Spanish teacher and to continue traveling. I really got bitten by the travel bug. So having over the past twenty-eight years, taken eight trips abroad to Costa Rica, Mexico, Spain, Guatemala a few times, I really have found my niche in Guatemala. And the reason why I'm choosing this as a more formal way of integrating the language and culture with the students is the fact that, first of all, it is a world heritage site, Antigua. It's about forty, forty minutes or so south of Guatemala City. Very beautiful, rural, quiet little town, one mile square. The roads are very easy to walk through and the students, after two days on the trip, really feel comfortable in the city. We live with families, which is important. We're not staying in hotels. We settle in with the families. The students take about six hours of culture class before we arrive so the students feel comfortable with this big adjustment of living with families. All the families provide the meals for the students. And we casually walk as a group, like little ducklings, to our language class, which is about ten, ten minutes walking from the neighborhood where we all stay. I did take this trip last year with a group of students. I did not have it sponsored through the Cohasset School Committee approval because I had already jumped the gun and got things rolling, assuming that it had already been approved because I had taken the trip years before. So now I'm doing it right way, doing the steps in ahead because I plan to do this next April. This would be the following year, this would be for April of 2015. And I'm trying to expand this trip now to include three days of an immersion experience traveling to Tikal, Guatemala. So we will land in Guatemala City and then take a flight directly to Tikal to spend three days at the ruins, which are the biggest Mayan ruins. The Egyptians, no offense to the Egyptians, they had hundreds of pyramids, but the Mayans have them with thousands of pyramids. I do have some video. I don't know why I don't see it projected. It's on the screen here. All righty. Yeah, we'll try. If not, I have a nice Wiki space I have for all my classes and I made a specific Wiki space for Guatemala so the students can get excited, all the students, regardless of whether or not they're going on the trip. I do have a lesson where they learn about the culture, they learn about the Mayan languages. Twenty-two different languages in Guatemala speak the Mayan languages other than Spanish. We learn about Rigoberta Menchu, who won the Nobel Peace Prize in the eighties. And we read excerpts from her book. We learn about the weavings. For example, the indigenous women will do a we peel, which is a dress, a blouse, with engravings of intricate designs of Florence of Guatemala. But yet each region in Guatemala, the ladies weave their own particular pattern. So I bought this as a sample to show the students when I get home that there is such an amazing wealth of artifacts, of weaving and culture and ceramics and music. So one part of the curriculum frameworks has the students need to learn the products, the perspectives and the practices of another language in another culture and compare it to their own. So what better way than to bring them to Guatemala and bring home all of the products, such as the native drums. These sound really great because I've got a dozen of them. So when we have twenty kids whirling on them with the different Mayan music in the background. This is a drum that shows Tikal, which is the Mayan pyramid that I hope to visit with the students. And we also have a vaspa, which is a very background music, so I bring these home for the students. And they get to visit after language class in the morning. We take these local excursions on a little minivan and we go no fewer than a half an hour down the road and we visit a coffee plantation. We visit a macadamia nut farm. We visit a place where they make chocolate, that was my favorite spot. And we actually learn how to grind the cocoa bean at all the language courses. All of our courses are in Spanish. All of the interactive activities that we do in the afternoon are all in Spanish. And even though they don't get it, they're watching, they're participating, they're, they're making the chocolate, they're crushing the beans, they're helping with the process of the coffee plantation and how to roast the beans. We go to the co-op and I had a beautiful spot of Christine Gani working with the Mayan weaving room with the Guatemala lady before and she said, "Take the handle, put it through the, put it through the strands, go up and down." She sang it all in Spanish and she was just looking at the phone line and everyone's clapping. And then we also did a Mayan wedding at this women's co-op of weaving. And we actually put on all the traditional dress and we had two students from Cohasset actually get married in a mock wedding, which was very cute. And so with the Wiki space that I have, the students can then go back to their class and actually share it with the students on trip abroad. So I'm trying to connect with cultures, not only for the students that participate, but prior to the trip, after the trip, we have the Wiki space, we have music that comes from Guatemala, beautiful literature, poetry, and just try to immerse the students, even the ones that aren't able to go, in the different cultures that are Spanish-speaking. The reason why I have chosen Guatemala and to travel basis is the fact that this is one of the few places where we can have one-on-one language course instruction. So we get up in the morning, we meet at the basketball court at the end of the street and we have three hours of one-on-one language instruction and the students are petrified on day one. And we even brought eighth grade students on the slides trip. We had five eighth grade students, five tenth grade students. And the other middle school teacher, Jill Kelly, accompanied with me on the trip. And as we went, they said, "Can we please just go as a partner because this will be very scary?" And after that first day, they were fine because they're local women, they're local businessmen, they have some time off. And they sit and you just converse. So it's a very natural, relaxed setting. We're out in the beautiful trees and sitting quietly with a partner who then will walk us to the town, which is right around the street. And I said, get, you know, invite them to a cup of coffee, buy, let, buy them a pastry and, you know, show them that you appreciate the culture. And they're so excited, they said, "Today, we're going to go somewhere else as well." So at the end of the week, even though we're there, this last trip was eight days. I want to expand it to ten days for this trip. It gives the students at this age a nice idea and a dip in the water to get outside of their comfort zone, to see what it's like to live with the family in a foreign country. And, and they take them right in. In fact, one elderly man had two boys in the eighth grade that were his students and he walked them right with his elbow to class because he wanted to make sure they were safe. And I said, "Stop again, it's okay, we're going together." "No, no, they're my responsibility for the week." And they actually link arms, which is very customary Latino way of walking in the street. And I just have no complaints about the travel agency, about staying in this peaceful, quiet little gem of the city in Central America, which I think students don't have the opportunity to do at this age, to go to Central America. And some parents have said, "Why not Spain, Mrs. Jordan?" Because Spain, the students can go in college. And I think it's much more of an accessible trip to go to Mexico or Spain. So that's why I chose Central America. So the students have an idea of what most of the world looks like. Very rural country, very rural, very poor, but beautiful, proud people and they have a lot to share. So I think the students get quite a bit out of it. And in the brochures that I handed to you, there's a little brochure on the language school. In fact, the week that we were there, there were tough medical students that were there for the week and they were excited to see that there are some college kids that were there as well. We were the youngest students ever to go to this school. Bringing middle school students to PLFN language schools at first. ACIS, I've traveled with them on eight different trips, I've had no complaints. They provide wonderful service, so I've always stayed with ACIS from Boston. And in terms of the cultural connections and the frameworks, there are, there are multiple intelligences that are used when you're traveling abroad and the interpersonal skills that they gain and the sense of independence and the personal pride they get that they, many of the students have traveled. This will be their first trip abroad and they really feel comfortable and empowered that they were able to manage on their own, get outside of their comfort zone and come home safe and sound. So I hope that I'll get your blessing to try this trip again in 2015.
Yeah, you definitely get my, my blessing. I just want to put a plug for Antigua. I'm very familiar with Antigua. I've done work at the Napa Casa Cito. And so there's local culture people, one is a professor of college in the best College of Art. And she, you know, has done work at Tikal. And Tikal is amazing. Have you ever gone?
No, I haven't.
Yes, it's amazing and I spent about three days there. We used to have a trip here at the school that went there and, you know, the students used to have the experience, but this is a somewhat different trip that you, it's more language-based.
Right, where the other one, I think, was studying science.
Yeah, totally. And it's a very safe city for parents who are watching. I mean, it's very safe, not so much like Guatemala City.
Yeah.
But quite the reverse.
Yeah. Thank you.
And, and I just think it's a, the city is using with a lot of culture and they have the plazas and just the way it's structured, I think it's perfect for the age of the children.
It is, it's a very safe, it's a very comfortable setting. And in fact, when I went there, I actually breathed comfortably because usually when I take students abroad, I'm always waiting for something that, you know, I'm just nervous what may happen and it, I just felt very relaxed there. One time I took students to Spain and it was five different cities and seven different days and the kids would come back and they'd go, "Where was this?" They couldn't even remember where they were because it was such a whirlwind in and off the bus. In this place, we settle, we unpack. They have two drawers in the bedroom where they're staying and they stay with another student from Cohasset that's studying with them. So we had five students and they doubled or tripled up in different rooms. And we had four different houses and they were the same houses that we stayed at four years prior. And it was fun to see the families again.
And one more comment about the weaving cooperatives. The women and children in, in Guatemala really need a lot of support because first off, you know, women, girls are, are not educated at the same level. That's where Casa Cito, where I did volunteer a lot of fundraising for. And so, you know, the, the women are just getting into the cooperatives as a way to have some independence. Their husbands and partners often had a hard time with this concept. But through plugging through and really keeping up and, and working with support systems, the cooperatives are doing very nicely. But they did get a lot of flack setting them up from their husbands. And they just worked through it and it, and it helps educate the girls that don't get the same degree of education as the boys.
And it's a good point, Dr. Lee, that you brought up about the co-ops because when we travel, we do educate them about how important this is for the women to have their own business. And we do support one of the local co-ops. And we also do one day of community service. We spend an afternoon at a local school. And we donated seventy-two little book bags. We made little pencil cases and we wrapped them all up and brought them and donated our time at a local school with Common Hope, who also has a familiar Cohasset passion as well.
Right.
Yeah, so it's a wonderful trip.
Just a couple logistical questions.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Is there a limit on the number of students that you can take?
No, but I just know that our, our past two trips have been seven to ten students. So I would say maybe twelve to fifty max, I think would be manageable because the streets are narrow and we travel in little mini tennis vans. And the teachers that accompany us, that provide the one-on-one language class in the morning, accompanying us on trips in the afternoon as well. And I told them, "No, it's necessary, you have your afternoon off." "No, no, this is part of my obligation." They actually are stuck to the hip with their student and the students all want to cluster together with the coffee plantation and they pull them by the back and they're like, "Estás conmigo?" And they have to walk with their student, you know, and so they can practice Spanish. So the teachers take it very seriously that you're under my supervision and we are speaking Spanish. So on the bus even, they sit right with their student like a, like a one-on-one chaperone. So it is a very comfortable setting.
And then do you, you mentioned that Jill Kelly went with you last year.
Yes.
Was she accompanying you this year and are you looking for the eighth and tenth grade again? Or you're?
I'm just opening it up to see, you know, who is interested and who would like to go because I know the eighth graders did manage themselves very well and we had no, no problems whatsoever. And the food was very safe, the water was fine. We drank bottled water and the families with which we are chaperoned and housed are very comfortable having students in so they know to use just the bottled water and to cook meals and things that would be simple but yet tasty for students. Stews and chicken and rice. but yet tasty for students, um, stews and chicken and rice and vegetables, nothing too spicy.
Can you tell me, I'm reading the letter that was in our packets, obviously we didn't have these. Um, is it typical for the students to get two and a half credits for this type of a trip? Which you are requesting.
Well, I hadn't done that in the past and before I had changed it to one point five because I know the French exchange has some, um, credit that is, has already been approved. So I thought, you know, why not throw it out there and see if that might be something we could consider to give maybe one point five credits because the students do, do twenty hours of language one-on-one class and they do have a final exam that was one hour written and one hour oral proficiency and they actually had a series of questions and they actually give them the actual proficiency exam because this is a school that's used by the Navy, used by many medical schools abroad. So they do have a very thorough proficiency exam and they can actually keep record of that. Um, so I thought, the whole time we're speaking in Spanish and they're living with families, so why not give them some credit because when we come back, they do PowerPoints and, uh, present this trip to their local, their nearby classrooms.
Right, well, the French exchange trip is similar and I would think that.
But it is longer, there's two weeks, it's ten, but.
Right, so, but this, you're asking, requesting more credits than the one that's longer.
Oh.
So I'm just curious.
Oh, I thought, I thought the French trip was two point five, so I thought maybe one point five credits or even one credit, but just to give them some credit for.
Okay, I have it reversed then, it says two point five credits here.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right.
That's okay.
In my new handout, I asked for one point five, knowing that the French trip is more involved with their housing students here and we don't have the, um, the French exchange.
Okay.
Dr. Shippard, I'd probably make a recommendation for the credit that you sit down with. Have you sat down with Mrs. Conley to look at all the trips and see what everybody's being established for credits to make sure that things are in balance and work for the, the program study? So I think what I would recommend on the credit part is perhaps, uh, no matter what the committee decides now, if they're in approval of this trip, that the, you come back with the credits because you're not going till the spring of two thousand fifteen.
Right.
And that would give time for Mrs. Conley to look at all of the trips and the balance and make sure everybody's in still together. That would be one recommendation.
Okay, and can you tell me what the cost is? The cost right now, it looks like it'll be about twenty-five hundred dollars, between twenty-five and twenty-eight hundred dollars. Last year's trip was twenty-two hundred. But that includes, it's all-inclusive, round trip there, all meals, uh, everything's paid for. So really the students didn't even need a hundred dollar spending money. Uh, when they're there, they just bought little bags of coffee, some T-shirts and some of the weavings. They have smaller versions, they don't need to buy a quilt, they have little purses and.
It's a little different than being in Paris.
Right, exactly. It's expensive, particularly more than a dollar. Exactly, exactly.
So the, so it's less than the, uh, estimated three thousand, which is on your.
Yeah, see, once again, we're still in the works because I had just heard about being approved for this presentation on Friday. So I sent out, um, the information to the two travel agencies I'm working with. There's one that's a more local one in Guatemala that's Voyager tours and they're working in cooperation with ACIS. So I'm estimating maybe five hundred for that extra excursion to Tical since it includes that there.
And I just have one more question.
Sure.
What type of fundraising do you do for the trip?
I ha- in the past, I haven't done any fundraising, uh, but that's something that I would definitely be open to do and we could maybe do some bake sales or a car wash or something like that for students.
Okay, just curious. Do we have any scholarships set aside or whatever? I know the Social Service League helped out, uh, a student or two in the past for some of the trips.
That would be great for me to look into.
Yeah, but maybe the, you know, that's something that the principal.
They wouldn't want anybody to feel like they have, were excluded because they could.
Right.
There's people in the community too that have come to the high school, you know, and, and aided students in the past. Um, you, you probably know that, so.
I could check with the local board.
I would just check with the principal. Because things should come through.
Hey, can I ask you a couple of questions to help the committee and to help Mrs. Conley? So you're asking for ten days away and I know I saw Thursday, so would students be missing two days? How do they make up that work? How does that work in terms of working with your, your colleagues to make sure they're not, you know, upset that students are being removed from the classes?
Exactly, so that's some, this is something new because my, I've always had them go just during the April vacation with no time missed from school. But I thought the opportunity after speaking with, um, Dan, um, from the middle school, Dan, oh, I'm going blank. Um, science teacher, Dan Jones just went to Tical and Mike, uh, Mike Welsh, who's department head of social studies at the high school has been and he said, "You can't go to Guatemala without going." So I just figured the language class runs a full week and so I thought maybe prior to April vacation would be better than after. So I would put in advance, um, two weeks in advance and notice to all the teachers, these are the students that will be going and it's up to them to be responsible for the work. Uh, maybe get the work in advance that they can do while they're in the airport because there's plenty of time. Uh, maybe they can email the work or, um, maybe do the work in advance of the trip prior to the trip.
And in advance, it's good, and just check for the holidays between Easter and Passover and things because if kids away and parents, families feeling they can't go because of the timing. Because I, I honestly don't know the holidays.
Yeah, because I'm not sure. And I put the dates down, but those are fluid dates because I'm not sure when they're vacation.
Yeah, I can tell you about the holidays.
Yeah.
Just one more comment. Um, yeah, um, also in the past, you could work it out with Codeford and some of the sports that, you know, run that time, um, but here's been, when one of my kids went, uh, they, they couldn't start for a, a, a period of time.
Oh, that's great, children's sports.
Yeah, they got docked actually. And, um, and she was, said that she wasn't committed to her sport, she was personally a sport athlete because she chose to go on this academic trip. So I think you could work that out with the principal and ED and things like that, work out something.
Right.
Because he said it was last, the joint community service. The coach said it wasn't, um, a mandatory tr- uh, academic experience, so therefore he docked her, okay? So.
No, I, I just think that. One year, I went in February just because April seems to be one of the issue with sports.
I feel like some practices you have to be at in order to participate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess. Well, and he didn't say anything about the MIE, he just thought it was, um, not showing commitment to the team. But then she did this because it wasn't, um, a mandatory academic experience.
So I just think that, no, I wouldn't want another student. No, she, she sucked it up and did, yeah. But I just think that it's not sending the best message.
Couple of other questions to help, to help the committee. So in terms of the students who would be attending this, because we're now, we're talking about the spring of two thousand fifteen, but in terms of students, the level of language that would be required to participate, obviously, somebody who's never partaking in, in language would not be starting, typically would sign up for this program.
Yeah, we had eighth graders come because they started in the sixth grade. So I, I'm requesting novice three, which would be students who have completed the middle school experience. However, we had the eighth graders and they managed themselves just fine, of course, at a more basic level, but they were still fully engaged in all the activities and I think they really felt comfortable with. They said they were tired, they got a headache the first day with all the Spanish. But I mean, I really, I wouldn't want, I mean, I, I went for six months when I was fifteen and didn't understand a thing for a month or two, like I tell Christian, Spanish class and then all of a sudden starts correcting. So, I mean, one week, they're thrown into it, so I, I wouldn't be opposed, but I would say at least eighth graders and, uh, if they're involved in eighth grade language study.
All right, and so the difference between this trip and, and past trips is you've come to the committee asking for them to vote on this trip, meaning that then the district assumes all responsibilities for the safety and health of the children while they're over there. And they would have to follow the handbook rules when they're out of the country.
Yeah.
As well as when they're in our schools or in our rooms. So I want to make it very clear, this is your last time, you weren't able to do that because it was very short notice, you had already initiated fundraising.
Yes, I had already had checks, yeah.
And we could not, yeah, but this time, you're, you're almost two years, maybe eighteen months in advance because she said to me, "I'm going to be here next time." And I think she's just sad. But, and the committee can choose to either vote tonight and say that you are accepting of the program, but you have some other pieces such as the days and the credits you want worked out or you could ask Mrs. Jordan to go down, go out, work on those few things and then come back for a vote. That's the committee's pleasure.
I think the, um, the trip looks great, uh, it looks like it's a fantastic experience. Um, anyone who's ever gone overseas, it's, um, a different experience. Um, I guess I would probably ask, this, we have time probably to figure out this two thousand fifteen as far as the credits go. But I think it's reasonable to, uh, okay it from the point of view of the trip and then refine details of the credit. I'm not sure, I know the French credit, I think it was at the French, they got one and a half credits.
I just think they should all be kind of on a level play.
Yeah, yeah.
And this says two and a half, so.
And I would like Mrs. Conley to, uh, you know, have part of that conversation so we can report you accurately all those credits.
It's out of our purview to say whether or not it's, um, credits are, are okay. I think probably go through the administration first on the credits, but I have no problem with, uh, supporting it.
No, I feel the same. I think it's a great experience for our kids.
It is.
And I think that the Spanish students have been sorely, um, deprived.
Mm-hmm.
It's only because they have to go to France, huh?
Yes, well, you know, and the eighth graders get to go to Quebec. The Spanish students don't have an opportunity, a similar opportunity, so I think that this is great.
So it would require a vote because it's out of state.
So I asked for a motion to approve the Guatemala Home State Language immersion during April vacation two thousand fifteen, uh, with credits to be discussed.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the travel to Antigua, Guatemala during April vacation two thousand fifteen with fine details to be worked out.
I'll second it.
Want to give it?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And if you need more contact people, um, Dr. Peg Turner has a lot of background in Guatemala and so do I. And, you know, we can talk about it. And I, I speak Spanish, so if you are really short with, you know, in terms of, um, people to help you out, you can let me know.
Thank you.
I'm pretty familiar with the city.
Right, yeah.
Mrs. Jordan, I'm sorry, you need to forgive me. Uh, Mrs. Jordan, when would you begin initiating this trip? Are you looking to initiate it next fall? Are you discussing it with students during the course of the thirteen, fourteen year?
I would be interested in at least letting students know that this trip is available this spring, so maybe they can have deposits come in because, I mean, it is an expensive trip and, and families need to provide time to manage that for next year. So, um, I, I know there is a trip this year with, uh, the history classes going to Europe. So they're all set with that trip, so I wouldn't mind announcing it to try to see what interest there is this year to proceed.
Okay, so that being the case, I would ask that you come back to the committee with the conversation about the credits in the month of February maybe so that time doesn't get away from us and then you can be thinking about the springtime.
Great.
All right, okay.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry that this didn't work, I had some nice little clips of the students, uh.
Just with regard to Mrs. Jordan's visit, oh, Peg, have a seat please.
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Um, I can prob- we can probably streamline the process by including the Guatemala, um, immersion description in the program of studies, which is where the French program exists and identify the credits therein so that when I bring the program of studies to the committee in January or February, it's part of it. So that would probably make sense if that were your books.
It does, thank you. Mrs. Jordan. Will students with, um, special needs be provided equal access to these types of trips since many times, uh, students with significant need are not able to attend foreign language classes? So have you, and are you able to include them as equal access since this is a school-related activity?
I would be fully able to bring a student abroad who, uh, and the student who's interested.
But you also said that with the language, they have to have a language background.
Yeah, well, the thing is where it's all in Spanish and we have the, the language plat- it's all conducted in class in Spanish. I mean, if they're, if they're interested and they want to do that leap of faith and jump right in, um, I would love if they had a little bit of prior language just for their own comfort level and convenience while they're in Guatemala, but I would definitely be willing to have anyone who's interested in language.
Just as a member of CPAC, maybe we could let the other parents know. I mean, my children are young enough that maybe I don't, well, you know, maybe when the time comes up, I can say, "No, they must take a language so they can actually have access to these type of trips" as opposed to, it seems like, from what I understand.
I don't know if you're aware, but many children on HIPs don't, they're not able to take foreign language.
Yeah, my son is one of them that's, he has another school certificate.
Yeah, I'm very different, but yeah.
Yeah.
But I would. But as you, as she said, maybe that could be a provision that is open to kids, maybe they could study. It sounds like you're planning this in the future, so maybe kids could study this on their own and then come into the program.
Yeah, definitely. I think so.
Yep.
Very well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Carolyn, is there, so are the overseas trips that are approved and planned, are they, uh, appear in the program of studies?
Not overseas trips, ones that are considered to be, um, that allow students to work toward the global competency certificate, which the French exchange does. And because the French exchange is almost a year-long thing where we're hosting French students in the fall and then they're going in the spring and there's the constant communication between the two schools.
Okay.
Um, that has been considered to be a part of the program of studies because it has so many layers to it.
Okay.
And because the students have been allowed to earn credits for it in the past.
So coming up this year, it's the history trip.
But the history trip is excursion. Yes, it's a side. Never will be the program of studies.
Okay.
Because it's just one of those EF tours that, that I beloved.
But we don't go.
And their, and their great experiences, but not the level of culture and immersion and study.
Right, right, okay.
No final exams, no twenty hours of.
Oh, I'm sure they keep it journal.
Sure, I'm sure they, I'm sure there's quite a lot.
But from their psychosocial growth perspective, they're learning a lot.
Thank you. It's a good experience.
Thank you.
Trying new hoops.
Yeah, next up is enrollment update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the, the next item on the list is the enrollment update. I had said to you that once we finished collecting the information of students who are enrolled in private schools, we would then send that information back to you folks, and so the numbers were completed, excuse me, were completed in between the last meeting and this meeting, so we, hence we handed that to you, uh, in looking at the numbers. Uh, if you look at the percentage of students who are attending private school this year against the entire body of students who live in this town, who could normally attend here and do attend here, um, this year we have approximately thirteen percent of our, our students who live in this town attending private schools, which is down from last year, which was fifteen point three percent. Just to give you an idea of the numbers.
So in the, in the last three years, just on enrollment alone, it's gone up eight percent, roughly from two thousand nine, so eight point, uh, eight point five percent, actually almost close to nine percent since two thousand nine, two thousand ten school year. So we're up almost ten percent, so nine and a half percent.
No, a hundred forty-three students since two thousand nine, ten school year. It's a lot. It's the equivalent of, uh, almost five teachers.
So how does that work with, if you have, for example, in two thousand ten, there were, um, eighteen third graders, but then, but then only three fourth graders, so they, they all fell back into private school?
It varies, you know, what we can't account for in the database, that we're not able to pull from the way the database is set up, we can't tell you who was enrolled here in two thousand and nine, ten and might have moved.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Right.
Versus gone to private school.
There's a lot of factors.
And who came and moved into the town. Maybe somebody who's attending, say, their academy moved into town and continuing.
You don't track the student by a NID number of some kind.
Right, we can't track them that way in the database, so that's what we might have-
Right, neither am I.
It's a little bit harder. I mean, it'd be great if we could actually do that, but we're unable to do that with the database we have, so what I tend to try to do, though, is take a look at, um, the vertical upward, so kindergarten that year, first grade the next, second, try to get a sense of the numbers going up, and pretty much the numbers are traveling upward. So that's why you can see the growth. And then next year at this time, I'm continuing to communicate with, as I said, continuing to communicate with the planning board, keeping an idea on how many people are getting permits. I'll be looking this spring as to the home sales, and we're looking to see as far as what's being built at Toll Brothers, how many homes will be actually built at that point.
And we talked about, this is sort of related, um, some time ago, about doing kind of an RSVP for kindergarten at, around the end of the year.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is that something we're still gonna try to implement?
We're still looking at it, yeah, and I'm still, uh, trying to work with Aaron to, you know, get out the words, how important filling out the censuses that comes home to everybody's houses, as well as, I know that Mr. Milonowski and some of the folks over there are trying to find a way to be sure that folks fill out that census form if they come for a license of some sort, or a permit, you know, here.
Right. Okay.
We'll give you your dog lessons, but you've gotta fill out the form at the same time, so we're trying to find ways, because even going out to the daycare centers is not gonna give us an accurate count, and then we have folks who are moving in all summer. We had a lot of folks moving in in August last year, and you can't account for that in the spring at all.
You must represent this word. Yeah, but I didn't even capture ninety-eight percent through an RSVP.
Mm-hmm, hopefully.
Okay, good one.
Hopefully, thank you. But I think it's impressive. You can see that, you know, from two thousand eleven, twelve, we had two hundred and ninety-three students that were going, attending schools outside, uh, for private pay, and as of last year, you went to two forty-four and then two forty-six, so, you know, it's somewhat topped off right now. And we'll look at the numbers the following year, always keep them tracked.
So it looks like the numbers are fairly stable from the private school point of view.
Mm-hmm.
It's come down a little bit, but fourteen, fourteen percent, sixteen percent, thirteen percent, thirteen percent, um, with a growth overall of about ten percent of those same, yeah.
Right. Um, I'm questioning, do we do, like, for students who, um, leave the system, do we have any interview with the parents?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that-
So that's where you could get some data following the students, per se, you know, especially the ones who leave the system. That, that's what I'd be most concerned with, because we've had investment in their education, and for some reason, they're leaving the system. That's, would be very helpful to have that data. How many of those students actually exited to go to private school?
Right, and a lot of the, uh, de-
They moved, they moved.
Yes, particularly at the secondary level, a lot of it's family tradition versus at the younger level. We have two private schools that are relatively close to the district, and a lot of families will partake of those, because those are the ones in this area, but by the time they get to the secondary level, a lot of times it's because of family tradition, they're finding parents are integrating.
But, but there, sometimes you could tease it out a little. Uh, I know for a fact that some have left because of social reasons.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's something that we could really help. In fact, one family, I did an intervention, and I kinda helped them solve their social reason, and so then the kid decided to, you know, come back. So, um, you know, I think that we can sometimes help them with s- some situations.
We can always do a better job, is what I'm saying.
Yes, I mean, it wasn't a bullying situation, it was, you know, just a integrated into a school system for somebody who didn't come from around here, and when you come in in the sixth grade, it's not exactly easy, no matter where you're coming from.
Mm-hmm, you're right.
Jane, your question?
Um, I have a question for Mrs. Conley.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, how do we ask for this feedback? When peo- when kids are leaving the district, how do we approach the family and ask them? Do you do it in writing? Do you?
The families ask to do it in writing, but the student and the parent often meet with Kate Nelligan when they indicate that they want someone to fill out a teacher recommendation for private school, that, um, in the past, Kate has met with the family to talk about what are the reasons, uh, whether they're programmatic, or whether it's, uh, for sometimes religious reasons, whatever is the pro- whatever is the reason students want to leave, and, um, I think that they do a good job of, I've certainly had conversations with some of the kids that have left, when eight, you know, eight girls were going to NDA, and there was only one family that was on the fence. The three boys going to BC had planned on BC since third grade. Um, an interesting newer trend, we have two students who are repeat, who left us to repeat the eighth grade in private school, because they're young for the grade, and they fully intend to re-enroll as freshmen next year, and-
That's typical here.
Right, so I, I won't say that they're, they're trying to get another year of being competitive in high school sports, but for some of them, it's a maturity thing. So we've lost those students, and two, um, are, I know, are intending to come back, but if it's, if it's a cut and dry decision, and the student indicates early on in eighth grade that he or she intends to go and is taking the test, if parents start to make inquiries about private school opportunities, then Kate will generally refer to myself or Mrs. Samler to say, this is a family that we need to have a conversation with, and oftentimes, um, families will say, you know, they can't really cite that it's a smaller school, they're looking for a change of environment, and that they've heard good things about, um, whether it's a private school or whether it's a parochial school, it just seems to be a family decision. I've not, in truth, I've not had any family say to me, we're leaving because we dislike this building, or this school, or this town, they are, you know, obviously residents, it just seems to be something that the, the students want to try for some reason, and the family supports whether or not they have a history with another school. I've not had anybody say, um, you know, there's nothing you can do to convince me to stay, because I've certainly said, and have brought even Brian Scott into the conversation as an expert on parochial and private education, talk to me about the reasons that you want to go there, and we can, we can dispel a lot of the myths that people may want to leave for. Sometimes they've been, um, attracted by certain coaches or certain programs that they think are available, but definitely there's a conversation for sure. The families also ask to fill out, um, an exit interview sheet that, that asks them to explain their reason for leaving, because especially where the kids are concerned, you don't wanna make folks feel like they're on the hot seat, and that they have to provide a justification in person, and I think people are really comfortable, we get paragraphs back, as to, we feel bad, it's been great, but, all the aunts and uncles, and this is what we do.
So for ten requests for that type of information in writing, how many do you get back?
Oh, we, we, uh, we make it part of the students' exit. We have, we have, I have a piece of paper for every student that left last year.
Okay, because I know in the past, that has not happened, and I know that in the past, students have left without any kind of contact with that family.
Off they go.
Right. And that's just wrong, so I want them to be, better, I'm glad that we're doing a better job.
So I definitely track her, and that's one thing, yeah. Thanks.
Mrs. Phillips, has a handbag?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, I know last year, a letter went out to the teachers saying that they could, this past September, they couldn't send their kids, it seems like it, the letter went out in March, um, that the chil- the teachers of the children who are out of, um, district, or out of, out of district, could not attend, well, the letter went out so late that other people, you know, the fireworks set off with the teachers, they were unable to enroll at other schools, or, you know, fi- it was too late for, you know, enrollment for kindergarten in different places, and they kind of left, um, you know, hanging, so I don't know if that's something you're gonna do again this year, or?
Um, yeah, in fact, I've already had a conversation with the association about it.
Okay.
So, but I'm not privy to reveal any details.
No, no, I, I just want you to know that was gonna come and affect our numbers also.
It could, it could. I mean, we don't know how many folks are coming in, and it's a discussion to be had, but it's not happening right now, so, that, that's something that I had a conversation with the association last night. We're not making any decisions at this time.
Yes.
Sorry to report.
Yeah, just identify yourself.
Cam Carvet, I'm on the CPAC committee. Um, I have had several families come to me, um, from the Osgood that have had to leave the Osgood, um, because of team process issues, so several families have had to take their children out, so I think that's important to mention, children on IEPs that aren't having their, aren't able to have that communication level that they would like to be held, so I would suggest the school committee look into that and see where that, that, that is happening, and mend that, because these children often aren't gonna be able to maintain in those private schools if their need is great enough, and they will be coming back, so if they're children that, you know, live in Cohasset, and, you know, obviously will need, um, members of parents to make access to, and so I think it's important to look at the issue.
Thank you. Um, next one is the, uh, the chairman first.
Yes, Ms. Paccetti. I've alerted that was sent to Mr. DiGnaro indicating that, uh, Mr. Porro is, he's going to be retiring as of December tenth, um, and I'm going to let Mr. DiGnaro talk about it.
Well, Cosmo was one of our special ed drivers, and he's been with us for many years, uh, a great guy, we're gonna, we will miss him, and I think the kids might miss him too, um, so he's, he says he's ready to go.
Retire. Sounds dire.
He's been in a while, like, twenty, twenty years, fifteen years?
No, I think about, probably fifteen years, so, yeah. I mean, he's had a few health issues, and I think that kind of pushed the decision a little bit, but, um, he's always been great with the kids, too.
I wish him well, yeah.
And the, the person who's mentioned in the letter, is that his replacement?
Uh, Kathy, yes, yeah, she's been working along with, with him also.
Oh, okay, good.
Both of them have been driving for us. She's also a great person, so, so it was sad to see him go.
Um, okay, and the last thing on the list for my report today is to address block scheduling. We want to be very transparent in what's happening in the district, and, uh, as part of an agreement with the association, we said that we would be establishing a study group to look at block scheduling, and so I asked Mrs. Conley if she could come and address the process a little bit more, because she was the one who was really spearheading the process for me, in terms of, you know, putting the group together, and helping us to, um, really come up with some good conclusions as to the pros, cons, and any adjustments and tweaking we might need.
Okay, um, well, first of all, it's a work in progress. Obviously, the study group is still in the process of gathering information, doing research, and having conversations. Their next meeting is scheduled for November eighteenth. I asked Assistant Principal Brian Scott to chair the group, to chair the committee, um, for a number of reasons, but primarily because, as the principal of the building, I find that my presence in the committee, um, might not allow folks to speak as freely as they would like to, and even though I would encourage a lively discourse, I certainly wouldn't wanna be perceived as having an opinion one way or the other at the outset of something, so Brian was happy to take it on, and the first thing we did was to put it in the newsletter, that goes out weekly by weekly, um, through Blackboard Connect, and it was a big advertisement, basically calling any parent who was interested to please email Brian and let them know they'd like to be part of the conversation. So eleven parents did that. Um, at the October eighth faculty meeting, we encouraged, um, any faculty member who was interested in serving on the committee or being a part of the conversation to also let him know, and, and six faculty members expressed interest. Um, because of the very large number of people, um, and, and both of us believing that eighteen people is not a productive group, a size for a group, um, Brian sent out to parent, the parents, especially who were interested, a series of questions, basically a survey, would they be willing to share with him in person on the phone or by email, their, their opinion of the block schedule at the high school, so that he could put together a group that he felt was representative of everybody's input. Um, of the eleven parents, ten responded, one did not, and the, the faculty members also weighed in, so we ultimately picked people for the following reasons, is, I, I don't know that it's appropriate to identify the people, but I will certainly share with you their advantages, what their, why he chose them. Um, well, Mary has made herself a public person, so, she's a member of the school committee, but also a somebody who's had three students who've been through the process, who've been through the high school. Patty Thompson also is, um, she's our CTA president, the Teachers Association president, and she has been here long enough to understand the history of the block, which apparently, when the conversation first started, some people said, I think it was five years, I think it was eight, and Patty said it's more like sixteen. So she was able to chase kind of the genesis of it for people, so as from the historical, uh, perspective, she, she was helpful. Other people-
Sixteen, one six.
That he included, um, were, um, faculty members who, one who's very concerned about how the block affects struggling students and overloading schedules, he picked another teacher who is a veteran teacher but near to Cohasset, who has knowledge of other scheduling models that have worked, and he picked a, um, faculty member who was a resident with children in the system, and who's a member, um, of our current teaching staff, who has taught in other places, so can kind of speak as both a parent and a resident and a teacher. Um, from the parents, and I quote Brian Scott, quote, "I tried to get two extremes and two in the middle. I chose as follows," unquote. So he picked somebody who was decidedly in favor, somebody completely opposed, and two parents who, as they expressed through him, are in the middle. One has, you know, a strong community connection, and he figured that this parent would be very useful in terms of leveraging other parents to respond to a parent's survey, so we can really get a consensus, and another parent who, um, had a really lengthy response and interesting point of view, because she has kids of varying abilities who are now in college, but some still in the building, and she has, you know, it was a different experience for each of her children. Um, there were people both in favor and opposed who were not asked to serve on the committee, though all of their opinions were taken into account. Some people were not able to, because of the time, the time that the committee was going to meet, and that was primarily faculty members, and the parents who didn't respond, obviously didn't respond, and so what, what the group has done, and obviously, Mary is part of it, you're welcome to jump in any time, they met, they had about an hour and a half meeting initially, um, and the me- the meeting minutes are there, and the plan for how they're going to go forward is there. There's been talk of site visits to other schools who used to have a block schedule, who have gone away from the block. Um, they've already interviewed teachers and administrators and alumni, um, from Cohasset and other surrounding schools who have taught in a block, taught in a modified block, in a traditional schedule. Um, I happen to have taught in all three, so at some point, when it's appropriate for me to weigh in, I'm happy to do so, and, um, they've done a lot of research, they've reached out to some universities where we have, um, connections and professors who are willing to, who have, you know, to help us research the most up-to-date articles on the long impact, longer impact of the block schedule, what are the benefits, um, if there are any, what, what are the demerits, if there are any, and, or is there an impact, and, and all, on all of this is being considered within the fact that we are, we are a small school, who nevertheless, for all the wonders that that offers us, we want to be able to offer our children as much as we can, um, in the most comprehensive way that we can, and so I, the first thing that happened, when I bumped into Mr. Scott after the first meeting, he said it was a really great discussion, and he was still standing in the hallway with a couple of people, so I, I've heard from, you know, a couple of the parents and certainly the teachers involved, that it certainly is larger, a larger conversation than perhaps they anticipated, but the first thing, you know, that Brian said to the group out of the gate was, we are not here to make a decision, we're here to explore options, talk about the value, um, certainly create surveys, which they're in the process of doing, creating a parent survey, a student survey, an alumni survey, to figure out what people like or don't like, or what they perceive as the benefits or distractions, and then they will, you know, at an appropriate time, make a recommendation, um, to me and to the district leadership and school committee as to, as to their findings.
So the only thing I would add to that, um, just to clarify, I'm on the, I'm on the group as a parent, member of students, I don't represent the school committee on the group. Um, one of the things that we did, and that Brian Scott started to do at the onset of this process, was put together, um, a document just called perceived strengths and areas of concern about the block, um, which I'm happy to distribute to the school committee members if you would like to weigh in. It's kind of been a working document, and as I understand it from that, the different, four different surveys are being developed, um, really to get some more statistical evidence to support our perceived strengths and weaknesses about the block. Um, I mean, I think it's been a, a great process. I'm gonna be involved with some site visits, um, over the winter break, um, and, you know, look forward to the next meeting, so I think there are, um, you know, there are pros and cons to everything, so it's, it's, um, very interesting process.
Can you tell me the makeup of the committee? How many parents, how many teachers?
To make sure I get it correctly. There are four, well, five, counting Mary, five parents, four faculty members.
So the, it goes back sixteen years, is that right? So is this the seventeenth year?
I don't know, we talked to Sugar, but I think that that was what I, it was, it was definitely something, a number like that. That was a surprise to most people in the room. Um, and students have also been informally surveyed so far, that we've had conversations, particularly with students who've returned to us from private school that has a traditional schedule, or have moved in from another part of the country, or another part of the state, because their experience is so fresh, and this is now, we've come to the end of the first term, and it's a really interesting opportunity to visit with those kids and say, aside from, assuming wherever you came from, this was an academic leap, what else, how else does it feel, and I think that, um, that those conversations would be really valuable, because we always have one or two kids who would be anxious to serve on, in any committee, and while we appreciate that, we don't want it just to be the kids whose voices are always heard, so hopefully by reaching out to some newer students and/or some students who aren't always as vocal in developing a more comprehensive student survey, um, you know, at the end of the day, it's about them, so we wanna make sure that, that they're a big part of it.
And, and just because I know you were listing the surveys through quickly, it's not that you omit, you might have omitted in saying it, or I missed it, is, are the teachers going to receive a survey as well?
Yes. Yes, I don't think I said that, thank you.
Okay.
Could you possibly update the community through your newsletter and let them know the status as time goes on?
Oh, of course, great idea.
I think that that would be a good thing, because there, as you know, there has been some conversation, people have called me concerned, upset, and I would like to make sure that everyone understands the process, what's going on, and how it's being handled. I think that that's very important.
I think, I think the, um, if it sounds okay to everyone else, I think the appropriate thing to do would be to allow Mr. Scott to contact members of the committee to let them know that I'm going to include an updated, an updated little list in the newsletter, so folks have thought of Scott.
I don't think anybody needs names. I think that, I think that it's just nice to let the community know.
This is what's going on, this is the conversation.
Exactly, exactly. Nobody needs the names.
I have a question.
So, I mean, it's just, you know, what's going on in the, in the community, in the school community, is very important, and there are a lot of people out there who don't know what's going on. For example, the people who are in the middle school and elementary school level don't understand block scheduling, and they don't, it, they're concerned, so I just think that it's good to keep everyone informed about what's going on.
Right.
I would just say, too, one thing Brian stressed with me when I met with him, is that this is an information gathering body.
Yes.
That's, that's all it's doing, and gathering information, and then, you know, disseminating it, so it's not a decision-making body.
Right.
Like, and along the lines of what Jean was saying, uh, a lot of people do-
And along the lines of what Jean was saying, a lot of people don't even understand the basics of how the schedule works. If we could have a presentation or, you know, an output from this, something that just shows, here's how a normal day looks for, under this scheduling scenario. Here's how one looks when you have a block. Because I, for one, I mean, I've learned it here only, but I wasn't able to understand it before, just in casual discussion. If we can understand that people take this many classes or that many classes, it's for this long, long period or that many.
Mary's spot?
Yeah.
So one of the ways that we've changed the introductory program, the orientation for freshmen and for freshman parents, is to spend some time talking about what is the block. And so I actually have, I don't know what's the appropriate way to distribute it. I actually have a document that we kind of put in, you know, what is a block schedule? And just, it's a bulleted list of, because as with any rotating schedule, the kids pick it up like that, and if you're not living it, it's really difficult to comprehend. But we do have a way of, I do have a comparison chart of saying the traditional seven-period rotating, kids take X number of credits versus X number of courses. Would it be appro, perhaps that'd be more appropriate as an attachment to the newsletter for those who are more interested, here you go, rather than feel like it's voluminous. I'll discuss it with the superintendent, she can advise you.
It's not, it's not a bad thing to be overly cautious to let, help people who even maybe don't want to admit they don't understand it, to give them a primer, you know, so.
No, and that's fair because there's, there's, whether you're comfortable in school communities or not, there's, there's more jargon than anyone in the world wants to know. So I appreciate it at that point.
And when I was sitting on that side of the table for a year before I ran for school committee, and then after I started sitting on this side of the table, there were many discussions during the budget process about how it impacts the budget. And no one could really explain how block scheduling impacts the budget. But it is an important thing to note that in the four-block schedule, which is the one that we use, for every five teachers, you need a sixth teacher to make the block run. And that's documented from another school district who was working on their, working on their contract negotiations, trying to actually eliminate block scheduling, but, but trying to figure out if it made sense to do it budget-wise. And that's where I got that tidbit, so.
And Mr. DeJinaro and I have looked at the, the salary projections for next year, and I'm doing an analysis by minutes of teaching for, for course load, so that we can for once and all put on paper, this is what it costs us.
That's great.
Yeah, that's what we need, because at least it's concrete.
Because I can't even tell you how many meetings we sat through, you remember, you were there, where nobody could identify why, what, what the impact was to the bottom line.
We just felt that would be a good addition to all the information gathered to be able to do some hardy comparisons that made sense.
Even though, well, just, even though some of our decisions can't totally be made because of dollar amounts.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Just like we have some classes that are not as, have that many students in, and we have students who need more attention, I mean, it's just never going to be, it can't always be about the bottom line in education. And the other thing I wanted to say, Laura Humphrey in her, in her stats class sent me an email that if there are some things that the school board wants to have research, she has either students that are willing to do the research in terms of stats on a lot of different things, the percentage of schools using blah, 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 whatever, what we want done. You know, because they're looking for a project to help us out.
Dr. Shubert, I just want to say that in, you know, searching and just listening and reviewing the blocks, any, any company, any, you know, we review our curriculum on a regular basis, we review the results of our test scores every year. Companies review their assets at the end of every year to figure out their profit margins and what they might need to do moving forward. At this point, the block schedule hasn't really been talked about in, in this manner properly in the sixteen years since it's been instituted. So it, it's really, I mean, to due diligence, we need to, no matter what the outcome is, no matter what the final decisions are, at the very least, we should be reviewing it and bringing in a breadth of people who can really give some insight from where they sit and help us look at it. And in the end, we might as a community decide it's not the right thing, or we might decide it is absolutely the right thing, but we'll go forward comfortable that we've really flushed it out.
No, thank you, I mean, I think it's very important. Again, sixteen years or fourteen years, it's been a long time. I'm pretty sure it's closer to sixteen, because I know when we moved here in ninety-seven, it was, it was, it was a block schedule then.
Right.
Because we looked at the schools at that point.
One more comment about, about block scheduling. If we decide to continue it the way it runs now, I think we need to be looking at a creative way to change foreign language and the way we teach it here. And I have some ideas about how we could do that, that would make it a more robust program. Maybe not length of time during the day, but length of time during the year. Because the way we're doing it has been controversial. Some kids don't have foreign language for a whole year. And they come out of high school here not speaking the language, and that's a waste of time. So we really need to look at all of these things globally and figure out how to fix the things that don't work and enhance the things that do.
Just one more comment, kind of, Bill, I want you to say, that the, we have the good position of being, working from perhaps the more expensive model, right? We already have in place the block schedule. If it's more expensive, that's great. So I think we should be very careful to, as you said, not really look at the cost at this time. We're already absorbing the cost. So we should really look at it objectively in terms of what, what the right model is, and not, not look at it secondarily as how much it costs. But first things first is understand, is this the most beneficial way to teach? It's obviously, it's very, it's a very charged topic, right? And I, I remember just my, the very first school committee meeting that I ever went to as a, as a participant was about block scheduling, and the place was like filled with eighty people. And of course, you were never standing.
Paul and I were on the school board, I believe, for that one.
Yes, I believe you were.
No, there, there are a lot of factors and variables, and there's a lot of impacts that we have to look at, you know. We, the block scheduling has enabled a lot of our students to take very advanced classes before they take the SATs, things like that, and a, and it will, and it does affect students' ability to take more AP classes, which then, if we care about statistics, we may not. If we care about ratings, national ratings, we may not. But let's say we do, that, some, some of them are based on how many AP student classes students are in or they get a three or above. So, you know, with your students, obviously, you know, there are a lot of different factors. And however, what Mrs. Estino said about language, you know, obviously, if you don't have the preparation for language, that's also going to affect language. So we have to look at everything. There's cause and effect, and even that, it may not be causal, there may be other factors. It's complicated. It's like doing a multivariate analysis. I mean, it's really complicated. So I think it's great that we're having this study, and we shouldn't be emotional. This is like scientific method, gathering the information.
It's also important to note that there are different ways to do block scheduling too. So I'm, I'm guessing that they'll look at all of those things, right?
What I'll do is I'll send out tomorrow the strength, perceived strength and weaknesses document, and then if you have any comments or anything you'd like to add based on your experience, I can then share that with Brian, and that would be terrific.
Okay. Because some of us, especially my kids, were one of, I guess, I'm the oldest, the person with the oldest kids here. So they were the kind of, soon after being the guinea pigs of this whole thing. I think Ross, when she said go back sixteen years, I did the math in it, he was only thirteen, so he was soon into high school where they had block. So he was one in the first year or two where they had it. So, you know, and then his sister followed a few years later. So I, I kind of know the impacts of the positive as well as some of the challenges. The kids, when I asked them, they, they were very vocal. They both had slightly different responses, which is very interesting.
One comment about Mary's last comment. It's very important though to note that while you're participating as a parent, you are a member of the school committee. So we, you can share information with us, but we can't make any comment on it, except in an open meeting.
Well, you sent a comment to the faculty, or to the administration.
But we don't want people. Exactly, exactly. So, you know, we, I welcome your sharing, the information that you're getting, that's great. But we shouldn't talk amongst ourselves behind the scenes.
No, I'll just forward that information to Brian, because it would just be more useful for him to have it now than six weeks from now when somebody comes back with a packet.
Next up is the warrant, fourteen dash zero eight Sierra. As for a motion to approve warrant fourteen dash zero eight Sierra.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant fourteen dash zero eight S.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Okay, who's, who's seconding?
Any discussion?
I do have a comment to make. Going forward, for all the, there are, going forward for all the technology items that are purchased, I would appreciate receiving copies of purchase orders and have the purchase orders referenced on the invoices, please. They're not currently done like that.
Mr. DeJinaro, Mrs. Pescator will do that. I don't think there's been any orders recently.
There was one in this week's packet, this week's packet of bills.
So Mrs. Pesc, bullet, Mrs. Pescator, you know that will be from her job.
Yes.
I, Hooni Lee.
Yes.
I, Jean Estino.
I, Paul Truitt.
I, Barry McAltrick.
I, Paul Nveen.
And passes five zero. And next up, a report from Subdise.
Surplus curriculum materials.
Mary, you pointed to the high school.
Surplus, yeah.
There's a couple of memos in your packet. We have everyday math materials stored at Joseph Osborn School and Deer Hill School that are no longer functional because we implemented a new program initiated called Division Math. So we would like approval to just clear them surplus so that we may dispose of them. We do have a couple of vendors that are interested in probably purchasing the math from us, which will help us. So we'll look into that.
And a question, you know, if the vendors do, we get paid?
We'll get a credit on our account so that we could use, use a credit for all the materials.
And then after that, like, since we have a trip going to Guatemala, some of the official materials, you could talk to the Spanish teacher, maybe appreciate, because math is math, no matter what country. Numbers and numbers, and some of it.
If they buy it, then they buy it.
What?
If they buy it back.
No, yeah, but how about if some of them, they don't buy it? I mean, I just think it, since we have a lot of, this is kind of a, you know, there's a nonprofit attachment to the world that the Spanish department's doing, so it's just, it's a think about.
So you, you're saying, maybe send them?
Not this time, but in the future.
In the future.
I mean, you know, we, we don't have a Spanish teacher here right now to say whether it's going to help or not.
And then there was another memo put into your packet, I know it was late, but we have approximately two hundred eighty-three old-style CRT computer monitors that we'd like to recycle. They've all been replaced with a flat screen, more efficient type, so they're, they're either broken or just not usable anymore.
The energy savings you reported at a different meeting, that's great.
Their house, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, it said that.
So where would those go, just recycling?
So they would just be recycled, yeah, yeah.
Do we have to pay for that?
To be, no, we don't, no, not in this case, we don't.
Cool.
As for a motion to approve the surplus curriculum materials, do we require surplus?
I make a motion to approve the everyday math surplus stored in the Osgood. And also the Cannon eighty dash one, your cameras with.
No, that's, that's a donation. Oh, right, yeah, yeah. Yes, the everyday.
Computer monitors.
And the computer, and.
Computer monitors, if you want, we'll slip that in one, that's one.
Right, this is gifts, right, yes.
And I'll second the motion.
And presumably this is probably considered monetary, so we'd probably like to revoke a voice for this.
Yes, yeah. I, Hooni Lee, we could just do it, just in case.
I, Jean Estino.
I, Paul Truitt.
I, Paul Nveen.
I, Mary McAltrick.
There are no's, passes five zero.
And just, Dr. Shubert, just for a future, Mr. DeJinaro, sometimes if you go to that particular curriculum person, you know, you may see that there's somebody going abroad for making use of it. I've taken a, a number of things from the community to foreign countries, it's been helpful. I don't, I don't know if, we don't necessarily want the people in Guatemala not getting Division Math, or anything like that. But they may not have the opportunity.
Right.
We'll check into it for sure.
Right. And another comment about Division Math. Are, I know that some parents have contacted me that they wanted to come over for some math tutoring. But are there, this is kind of funny, but are there programs for parents so that they can keep up with their kids? Because there's been a big change for the people who are in the audience, the math curriculum, which actually, a while ago, I was part of, being a math educator, helped to do the University of Chicago series, and now this is an update, an update, is going towards more of a synthesis of knowledge instead of memorization. But parents are really struggling to do homework for their kids. And it would be great if there was, you know, maybe a parent night where the parents could really learn some of the skills, so they know how to help their kids with homework. Because I'm getting calls that I'm actually helping parents help their kids.
Right, well, just so you know, today during the day over at Deer Hill, they did have a parents' meeting for, you know, an informational meeting for parents. And again, they had another one tonight, except for, we're here, and they're over there. I'm sure by now they're done, but they had a second meeting tonight for folks who couldn't come during the day. So today at the Deer Hill, they've had two parent meetings.
Right, and actually, like, an open house thing where, where parents could come and get some help, you know, with this.
I'm sure that's the beginning of it. I'm not sure, you know, what, where they're going from there, but Mrs. Brooks organized it.
Yeah, because kids get very frustrated when their parents can't.
Right, and I know that some of the teachers went over during the daytime session, went over to Deer Hill to help.
Right, and they have very bright parents, it's just a changing of the guard.
Absolutely.
I mean, most of us have been educated in, in math development in a very different way.
I must say, I've had at least ten parents kind of concerned about it. They, they don't know what to do with it because it's unfamiliar, and they don't want to teach their kids their way if the school's teaching a different way. So I, parents and I, maybe, maybe that's what this, this was. But that would be, that is great, if you can do that.
An example, like, would be if the kid's learning condition, four plus five equals nine, the new way is four plus four, you know that's eight, and add one. Okay, and they're very same, why can't you just memorize four plus five and call in a freaking day? But there is such a thing called mental math and approximation and estimation, so that a kid, when the kid grows up and, you know, gets a receipt and it's ten percent, and the person puts out six dollars, it's six hundred, you know, and it's ten percent. They have to be able to do something more in their head and really get the gist of it. That's what the whole curriculum is about.
Right, and so, you know, last year, it was piloted in several classrooms. This year, the extension went to the entire school, both at Osgood and at Deer Hill, and obviously, everybody's getting their feet went together. But this was Mrs. Brooks' first time meeting with the parents, both during today and tonight. Mrs. Demus attended the evening one, for sure. I think she might have been at the daytime one, but I know she was heading over to the evening one as we were coming in here so that they could begin the conversation. And I'm sure if they need more meetings, they will do that. I'm not quite sure what Mr. LeCount has planned for the Osgood at this time, but at least, no, they are taking note of that.
Right. So then, Mr. Nveen, will it so call for something?
I will note that.
And I won't have to offer a math plan.
I was told that after third grade, you should not be helping your child with their homework because the teacher know, needs to know what the child doesn't know.
And the better it needs.
A seasoned teacher told me that.
I, I feel, what is, can I say, I'm about that. I, I feel nice about that as a math, a past math teacher. I think that there's enrichment activities, because I started the family math night in the enrichment program in this whole school district, which then became, we also added science to it. I, I think that parents need to get a sense of what's going on so they can do enrichment things. For instance, going. For instance, shopping is a whole mathematical experience if you're going with the lead lab and family, but, uh, so, you know, you can, uh, I, I think it is helpful to integrate parents in the, in the process. They shouldn't necessarily do the kids' homework, but it's really helpful for them to know what's going on.
That was her point.
Yes, because they can actually, uh, create situations of learning right in their home environment, in their kitchen, I mean, cooking, you know?
One, one comment, just, just while we're on the topic of kind of, uh, math and homework. So, other calls that I've been getting, and I don't know how we communicate this back to the curriculum or the principals or whoever, but, uh, I, there's, at least at the, at Deer Hill, with parents who sort of approached me about that, there's, um, a concern that the homework is almost too much, and maybe we've heard this from others, but, and then the, the parents are saying, you know, we're not, we're not trying to be lightweights about it, we're happy to have the kids do homework, but because the math, for example, is, um, is much more complicated and it's, you know, it's taking a lot longer than perhaps people think, and then you, you add on the reading and the other things that they're supposed to be doing, plus if the kids had activities and if you want to get to bed at a normal hour, and so on, so there's kind of a, a movement, you know, which is not to try to be, uh, underperforming or not high performing, but to just be more realistic about how much kids, at, at least, you know, of the younger ages can handle. So, it's something to just be aware of.
So, maybe what we could do is, um, have a conversation about this tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Kind of get that going.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Yes, excuse me, but once the parents learn Division Math.
I have a positive comment.
Good, love to hear it. As a parent of a second grader who had the old math last year and the new math this year, he is doing tremendously better, his typical learner. However, like you said, he gets forty-five minutes a night of homework, Monday through Thursday. He's seven, you know, so he's a younger on the second grade, it's, and he's a typical learner, average, um, and, you know, and when you add it all up, it's forty-five to fifty minutes because of the math, the spelling, the math facts, and the fifteen minutes of reading, so.
Right.
It's not a bad thing, but it's, it's a lot of work to try to do that in swim team and other activities, so. They have a long reaction.
Yeah.
Donation, donation.
Next up, donation, now, turn over, you, now you can do it.
Oh, yes, I make, yes, we're not gonna, I make a motion to accept a donation of a Cannon AE one thirty-five millimeter camera filter, thirty-five, yeah, I can't see it, thirty-five millimeter camera, I don't think there's a thirty-three, uh, camera with filters and an AD nine hundred and twenty zoom lens, very nice.
I'll second it.
I just want to comment, um, this was asked, I believe, because there are very few single end reflex cameras around that will take film.
I have two of them.
So, the request went out for someone to donate, and I want to thank, um, Mr.-
This is great.
For doing it, because, um, I'm sure everyone has a SOR camera at the house, but, um, the film group is looking for it, so.
Right.
Um, I would, thank you, it's, it's quite nice, yeah, that's a nice camera. Any, um, discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
Do we have to say, uh, yeah, we need a-
On your voice phone, yes.
Hoonie Lee, I.
Jeanine Stino, I.
Hi, Paul Schubert.
I, Paul Naveen.
I, Mary McGuldrick.
Uh, no nays and five zero passes. And my record.
And then, um, here, that concludes the monthly update, um, as of ten thirty-one, two thousand thirteen. We've expanded about approximately fifteen percent to a one to fifteen percent of the budget.
Would you pride in line where we are?
Yeah, yeah, we are, um, you know, we're a little concerned about, um, the unemployment expense line, you know, we did cut that way back, we had to cut that on part of the budget before town meeting, so that's, we're trying to keep a close eye on that. And really, that's, that's about it, the, the, we're seeing right now, you know, we've looked at everything we can, do some forecast and so forth. And just on the last page with the, um, the grants, some of the grant monies have come in, um, that aren't reflected on this report because they came in after the report was run, uh, so we're, we're pretty much up to date there with that, so.
So, maybe it's just the unemployment.
Right now, yes, yeah, yeah, we're watching that.
Okay, great.
Cool.
Um, next up, uh-
Could I add to that since it's budget related, um, that we did have communication from a community member who has requested a discussion of the kindergarten fees being removed from the, uh, the kindergarten salaries being removed from the budget this year. Um, I did explain the thought process behind that for this year, but we need to watch that for the upcoming budget process. They really need to be included, the salaries need to be included in our budget. Um, I explained the, I explained the cut, the significant cut, I mean, in my four years on the committee, there's never been such a large gap between what we asked for and what we got. So, you know, we, we really need, I think we need to push back if we're told that we have to cut that much next year. I mean, our, and our numbers are growing, and we need that money in the budget to cover teachers' salaries.
In addition, the chapter seventy monies never, uh, fully were vested to the district.
Yeah, right.
Because of the nature of the timing of the budget, the budget was signed and voted with town meetings long before the state monies were available, which is why there's, uh, excess, uh, free cash and extra monies and, uh, revenue from the state, uh, in the town budget issue. Um, next up, report, um, yeah. Um, who's on the subcommittees?
Uh, I attended the high school, school council meeting and, um, probably wasn't able to go. Um, that was terrific, uh, it's a wonderful group, um, that is there, and a lot of conversation, obviously, about numbers, middle school numbers, um, some concerns there, um, but generally, it was just, it was their first meeting of the year, so it was, um, introductions and, um, just so forth, and, um, today, along with Barbara, I attended the math, first day of the math conference, which was highly informative, there was a, a great seminar on emerging technologies and another one on the implementation of the PAR, um, which were very interesting, so I'll be going back tomorrow for that.
And, um, as I reported at a previous meeting, I had attended the first Osgood School Council meeting, and there's another one tomorrow, which I do plan to attend. Uh, I would like to call for a Facilities, Capital Projects and Technology Subcommittee meeting. Mary and I are, um, co-members of that committee, and I think that we should do that now rather than waiting until the week before it's time to go before the Capital Budget Committee to ask for money. Um, so I would like to have the three of us get together with Mr. De Genaro and sit and review some of the needs in the district, um, sooner rather than later.
Sure.
Okay, and it could probably wait until January, but I'd prefer to do it in December.
I'd do it in December because you'd be a second meeting in January.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
Absolutely. So, if we could kind of sharpen our pencils on the calendar pages and figure out what will work. Mondays are always good for me, Thursdays are typically good for me, so, we'll go from there.
Um, we had a meeting with the, uh, CPAC, um, about two hours discussing various options and concerns, and, uh, it was quite productive. Um, and, uh, just planning to set up another one, which, anyhow, the scheduling works, um, in addition to that. Um, one other thing with the communications, um, which I guess maybe it just bothers me, but if, if somebody were to send me an email and it's in bold, it means they're yelling at me, so I'd rather get yelled at on the phone. So, if someone's gonna do that, just pick up the phone and yell at me, because I can yell back. I don't really like to see the bold on my emails because it's not gonna be helpful, so, um, I'd rather be able to yell back. So, just a communication point that's there. That's all. Any other?
Uh, well, this senior center thing, uh, what's going on with Board of Elder Affairs and, you know, the land swap, uh, thing with the swim center in the town seems to have been working towards resolution, so that's really good. And, you know, they continue to hope to get things rolling, so.
Now, where's the, the land swap, is it the back end of there?
Yeah, it's the back end.
So, it's down, it's down the hill in the back?
Yeah, kind of down the hill, there's a map, we could ask for a reed carpenter, she has the map.
Because I walk the dog, yeah, I'm just trying to figure what the-
Yeah, you gotta work it out, because otherwise it's a whole process, you can't do, can't move ahead with all the stuff unless you get all the, in order. And some of our seniors don't want to be gone by the time senior centers goes. You're working with an aging population, so, you know, yeah, sadly, but, you know, almost thirty percent of the town is gonna be seniors for us in the near future, so we, and they're a cohort that's really helpful, and they've been there for us with the schools and everything like that, so it is important that we get it done. And the building is gonna be another meeting place, you know, so we always have to knock on St. Anthony's door or some of the, there's some meeting places, uh, like the school and St. Anthony's and other places, but this will be another place, another educational, uh, a place to, you know, uh, to have educational meetings as well in other events. It's not just going to be for senior activities all the time, even though that'll be the main course. We're all gonna be there, guys, hopefully.
And I'm sure you, you saw in the manner, there'll be a special town meeting on the twenty-third.
Right.
Any other?
Just one, one item which is really, uh, you know, just one item, because I ended up, uh, getting stuck. I wasn't here for the vote, I apologize for that, but I did want to just go on the record to say that I, um, am very appreciative of the service, uh, that superintendent has provided to the school, and I strongly support the contract even though, uh, it wasn't for, you know, it wasn't available for the official vote. And, uh, glad you're here for another term, many more.
Yes.
Um, we had a great CPAC meeting last night, there were fifty-one people in attendance.
That's awesome.
Um, Barbara was there, Paul was there, and we had a fabulous speaker speaking on executive function, and she was backing up what the whole staff has gone through on professional development. I don't know what the parents all know, we keep requesting that it gets put in the, um, uh, principals newsletters so that parents know that professional development is not just a day off, that the teachers are actually working very hard. And, um, October or either thirteenth or eighteenth, whatever the date was for the last one, they worked all day on executive functioning, and so we backed that up and taught parents what exactly executive functioning was, and we had, it was our largest meeting ever. We had people in attendance.
We lost one.
We had standing room, we kept trying to find more chairs.
It was hot.
And, and I, I apologize, I, I went there and got paged out, but it was terrific, um, it was a terrific, um, discussion.
And I had, uh, Juzeena's, everyone.
We have great meetings, guys, if you'd like.
I know, right.
We had, we wouldn't have had one last night.
A question.
Yes.
Um, I had asked previously if we could get, um, an idea of what is being covered in the Teachers' Professional Development Days, and I haven't received, and I'm wondering if you might make a little note and send that to us because it would be, I think it would be helpful if we knew what was going on at Professional Development Days.
Anything else?
That's about it, true, so.
And then, uh, this is an invitation to speak, if anyone has any comments.
I think we've been doing comments lately.
Um, any need to go into executive session?
I do have one more question since you've invited us to speak. Can you give us an update on the status of the technology items that were to be completed at the beginning of October? There were several items on the list, like things at Osgood, um, the connections at Deer Hill.
You know, I'm gonna have to say that you, in fairness, Rob sent me an email, but I don't have it all in my head, and if you wanted me to really recite what he said, I probably can't, so let me, um, pull up the email and get that out.
Okay, I mean, I am going to the school council meeting tomorrow, so I could get more information from that.
That's all right, I'll, I'll pull it up tonight, I'll get home, I'm, I'm, it's by tenth already, eleven.
Yes.
Hi, Patty Gillis, um, four ninety-two Troose Road. Monday, the, um, the computer teacher at the Deer Hill was upset, who had the only key, so that every single teacher in every classroom was unable to use the notebooks or any of the iPads. So, everyone's whole day, the day planning, all their curriculums were just totally washed. And they were, you know, pretty upset, and I want to say that I'm upset that when I asked last month Dr. De Gere about where is technology at, at the Deer Hill, because I have a first grader, and I want to, want to send my first grader to the Deer Hill, and she wouldn't answer me. And I feel that as a parent who has, she has to, you know, she owes me an explanation, she owes us an answer, and this is wrong. And I, you know, even before she owes Barbara Tolda an answer, she owes a parent an answer. And, and, you know, this was not forthcoming, she was not gonna tell me, is this some big secret? Um, I kind of really find it, you know, really feel that's in her job description. I really feel Carolyn Conley would never do that, well, Cal would never do it, even a teacher at a school would never do it. You ask a question, we expect an answer.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, uh, Paul? Can I make a motion or ask for a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn at eight forty-five.
I'll second it.
Paul, Naveen?
I.
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 Thank you. I wanna know.